We're right with that.
Great. We're still enjoying ourselves on a little more beach.
Finished with Debbie Lund, HR presentation. Do you have any staffing or internal questions for Debbie? I'd just like to acknowledge that we, I advocated we take your internet access away. She comes into my office too often and tells me things I need to know that I wish I didn't know. But she's brought a lot of new information forward, practices that we need to implement, the web portal for our applications, I think is invaluable, and I think she did more on self-preservation because of all the hiring that we were doing. But, you know, in the four years I've been there, we've never not had a job opening. It's crazy. Again, I think it's primarily the economy and our strong work at the jobs market here in Port Hurst, they put that down, is, is probably a contributor. We've had some retirements and most often, this is always about, it's just, it's just, there's a lot of, if you're skilled laborer, there's jobs, it's out there we have, there's no doubt about it. So, questions for Debbie?
Can you elaborate a little bit about the automated application? Certainly, the application that you could go over with me or give a brief explanation for?
Yes, it's through a separate company, this company called NeoGo. They work with local government around the central state, the state of Washington. If you were to apply for jobs in Washington, they do NeoGo. It has two purposes. One, it primarily might drive or just, well, okay, self-preservation, to be honest, but two, secondly, it was from the applicant perspective. Instead of getting a paper form to fill out to do the type writing that no longer exists, it's very simple. You have one standard application where if you're in the job market, then you're set up in NeoGo. And you have a few subamount questions to answer. So I'll come electronically to us. I route the applications electronically to the, to the hiring manager. They review it, they can rank it electronically. We typically have a panel of people, so then I can compile those rankings and see who votes in the top. The interviews, I can manage them, I can email all applicants out from the system itself in an email blast. I don't have to type those emails, they're already all in there. So it's just efficiency. Applicant can also check the status of their application and see where they're at in the process.
NeoGo?
Neo, N-E-O, yeah.
It should provide the records to review all candidate applications where they're at. Then Neo would come in, like, it's much more user-friendly.
It's cloud-based, you sit at home and see, watch your football game, open an application.
Has some features you can turn out, like if you don't have resumes, or you don't know how people graduated from college to protect Adrian's.
So again, a great note of innovation that we're embracing in the city. You hear that theme, at least for me, a lot, as far as operational improvements. So before we jump in, I want to talk about IT real briefly. So I'm going to try to keep my next couple talks to 10 minutes, and then turn over for ICG closely back to that schedule. IT achievements in 2019. So we've recently come to a agreement with Wave, Broadband, and Voice Data Services, which gives us the ability to take more control of our own system. We're not going to go on a county anymore, which will save us about $9,000 annually, and gives our IT manager, Steve, controls that he hasn't had before in order to open up portals for those that want VPN in and other services like that. We've deployed 17 new computers as part of our four-year workstation refresh. So we continually try to update our technology that is outdated. Computers get quickly outdated, as we all realize it very quickly, whether it's an iPad, an iPhone, Samsung, doesn't matter what the technology is, it's updated really quickly. And it's equally true with our computer systems. So we've been building in a program similar to ENR that we monitor what these computers hold, as we refresh them and bring them in. We implemented workstation management software, which allows us to be more efficient in how we deploy software. So we have icons on each desktop where Steve can remotely access each computer and deploy the software as needed, or updates. Before, we were on a ramp each computer station, taking it one at a time. So, again, embracing technology to help us become more efficient. We've implemented additional auditing and security. Security is a big issue right now. So we are really focused on the IT side, on security and preventing bugs. And lately, it's been a lot, data breaches, there's been a lot of communication on the Iran threats in the IT world, and how they are preparing to attack through the cyber networks. So we are heavily focused on preventing that and what policies we need to put in place to ensure employees know what to do appropriately. So all good things that come with having a full-time IT manager, that's best in the city, and it's the best in where we're going. Overall, Steve has actually saved us about $15,000 to $20,000 by looking at what we were doing, the programs we had, and looking at what was out there, and changing it to suit our business model. And one example is the move away from the county, the savings we received there. The other is looking at converting three or six, five licenses from a monthly subscription to an annual payments with Microsoft. It's the same product, nothing changed. We just looked at the different business products they offer, and we went along the module. So why would we bind it here? Let's go wholesale, let's go this way. And we looked at it and said, makes sense. So he's doing a great job, not just keeping us up to date, but looking at efficiencies and what we can gain for these practices. I have included here a snapshot of some IT data on the help desk results. And this helps us to focus our efforts in IT, whether there were having issues on when employees are putting in an IT help desk. If you recall, two years ago, we didn't have this in place. We worked with Steve, said, hey, how are we getting information from emails? Everyone was picking up the phone or walking to our desk. We said, let's have an email in which people could actually put in an IT help desk ticket. So you can allow us to better track the data and actually respond more effectively. So again, this is a snapshot of the type of issues we come across. For our budget plan going forward, it's pretty much on track. Use IT help desk to target our investments, our standard workstation rotation, renew our subscription to the software, looking at hardware, continuing training. Our new request is going to be looking at, I think I may have mentioned this before, but we're looking at a citywide intranet. Okay, that's accessible to only city employees. What this will allow us to do as managers is to have a platform in which we can put all our policies that are city-approved, all our forms that are city-approved, in a single location that every employee has access to. Currently, we all have shared drives, we all have different folders, and if you've experienced working in offices environment, we are not, humans are not very good at organizing, managing folders and the data. We tend to create another file, another folder, re-catalog, and it tends to grow. So the IT, excuse me, the intranet is a central place where the mayor can push out messages, messages from the mayor, talking about the city, talking about snow events, to all employees, as well as accessing the standard and approved documents, policies, and procedures. So they won't have to ask, they have a place to go get it. Individually for each department, then, that also allows us to translate that same work into for our department. So in my department, for example, we are developing standardized checklists and procedures for every position. So rather than have those documents stored on my folder, or Rebecca's folder, we're going to put that on the intranet, one location where everyone can find it, and there is no multiple version of it. So we're trying to control the versions of documents as well. The other piece we're going to look for going forward is becoming a smart city. And I believe we talked about this briefly in our last retreat, we haven't made much head on, but a couple things, what a smart city is, is moving towards an electronic records management system. I think you've heard that several times today as an important bag piece. Also, process automation, smart water meter readers. So rather than say now a meter reader, we have technology there that allows us to turn off the water, turn it on, take readings. All are smart technologies that cities are embracing to move forward in this new era. Asset fleet management, I'll be talking about that one this little month, about how we are managing our assets with partnership with Public Works Department. We have plans to institute a planning policy and then move towards a system which can help us better inform how we're investing in our assets. Think about investing a lot of money right now in the capital purchase and replacement of the assets. But how are we programming replacement over time? And how are we managing it? That will be upcoming in the months, so we'll be talking about stuff like that. So with that, I'm going to transition to the real topic I want to talk about.
Process and purchase, new technology. Well, Noah's passing that out, too. There's one other piece that we're going to talk about, probably first when we get to your time, is Noah, and Debbie and I, we have a one-hour training requirement with our insurance company that everybody has to take management training, including our city council. And if we don't complete that one-hour training, then we're subject to, our deductible is waived in claims if we complete that training. We missed the mark last year, and there's two council members, and I'm not going to name names. So, but what we recognize is that your training needs and the management team's training needs are different. So we've selected a training topic for the management team, and we're going to give you guys a menu of options that you can take that are more public, sort of, you know, more appropriate to you guys. And so I'm going to need your help, and it's a one-hour training, web-based, and it is a requirement. Well, there's a carrot there with that insurance company. They require that us, and if we complete that training, then we don't have a deductible to those employment-type plans.
Ask this to us now?
Yes.
These are one-hours now?
So, yeah. Go for it. And we'll come back to that.
So I'm going to continue with what I was talking about, being a smart city. Again, a smart city involves embracing technology to improve processes and capabilities. You've already heard from the chief a little bit about things that he's trying to introduce from a technology standpoint, you've heard from the clerk's office to talk about technology. This is just a continuation of that theme. Technology has improved, and while this picture may be from the 1950s, the city currently still uses these processes. We still have filing cabinets, and we still have folks that go to those filing cabinets to file the paper, pull the paper, store the paper. And so we're trying to move into the 21st century as far as outcomes to records management, workflow, and operations. So Laserfish is an innovative enterprise content management software. It provides content management and governance process automation. Laserfish is a project that enables cities to transform into a digital business. When we look at this library, Laserfish shows a number of modules, doesn't have to be a second, I just wanted to introduce you to a little bit. It gives us the ability to completely and digitally track and trail records. It gives us a complete audit trail of all records. It gives us the ability to create electronic forms and digital signatures. Now, I'm going to pause it, because that may not sound very important to the council, but from an operations standpoint, that is. We deal with a lot of paper that may not be useful. Instead, we could put an e-form, electronic form, on our website for utility billing customers, who could fill out online, sign online, and all stay electronic to our utility purposes assigned to account. Another example that I continue to come up with examples as I talk with my department directors. Last night, we had a safety committee. We can have an e-form for internal stakeholders, our employees, for injuries and illness reports. Again, right now, when an employee gets hurt, he gets a piece of paper, fills out the report, and submits it to hopefully his supervisor, and then submits it to HR. So you got three people touching one paper. By the way, the forms for each department are not the same, until now. HR and Tony, our new public works operations manager, have worked really hard to get a standardized report for all departments. Before that, if you looked at the reports, they were all different for all departments, and we weren't capturing very well. So an e-form would allow us to electronically fill out, it would automatically submit to the proper supervisor, it would trail and audit itself all the way through the system to approval, and then end up with our HR manager, as well as putting it in the correct records retention system. For me, workflow is incredibly important. Again, what we gained from Laserfish is a complete database of city documents that is text-searchable for public records requests. And when we get public records requests, we spend many, many, many hours, and I think, actually, the clerk's presentation understates the hours we spend in public records. Because I know we talk about it just in the hallway, in department meetings, in planning just to who's going to do what. So this takes all our paper documents, put it in a format where we can search it internally to retrieve that information at our fingertips. That gives us the ability to go paperless, and accounts payable, and other processes throughout the city, with complete auto controls, record management, and automation. It allows us to become compliant, to become compliant, and automate with our records retention, archiving, and destruction. Again, what this system will allow us to do is when a document comes in, we will have programmed in what this type of document is. It will automatically get stored into its retention schedule. So if it's going to be a retention schedule for six years, it is stored there, and it is automatically flagged for when it comes up for destruction, it is now flagged automatically. We are not having five people trying to figure out what this document is, when does it need to be retained, for how long, when does it need to be destroyed, and what boxes is it going to need to go in with a dance on that side.
And I'd have to mention that it could also, that same document could be housed in all five departments, as well as multiple times throughout their own drive, their personal drive, that standardized stuff.
So it's cloud-based?
Yes, yep, yes. So it creates complete standard processes for routine works, such as contracts and ordinances and staff reports. Right now, again, what we do is we go to our folder and find our previous version, and we work from that, we build from that. This will create a standardized format that everyone can go to, this is what a staff report looks like, that feels the same, and you're really now focusing on the content. You're not worried about the headers and margins, and whether this is in laser-based version. We spend a lot of man hours doing that.
And the clerk's office spends probably about 15% of their time just formatting the agenda before it sees me. So let's say we're using previous logos, different fonts, different sizes, sometimes they forget the motions, sometimes they forget. So we try to look out for those, and there's errors, obviously, and this will streamline that process.
Absolutely. So again, Laserfish creates a logical, consistent, repeatable, and documentable processes. I want to repeat that, because I think that was important. I had to focus a long time to figure how to take this giant product and connect it down to something that is meaningful for you guys as council, to understand our operational issues. It creates logical, consistent, repeatable, and documentable processes. For now, we rely on people. People are great, but if you improve the processes, people perform higher. I'm a big proponent of that. So every time we enter into a contract, ordinance, step, or recreating the documents, it's as if it's the first time. And so that's a lot of waste of energy and effort on the staff part. Again, it's not about people, it's about the processes. If we can standardize, streamline, and automate processes, so that the people do not have to spend non-value-added time identifying, rethinking, and recreating things that should be standard on a daily basis. I've got this example up, I wanted to have a video of it, but at least I didn't have time. I hope. Most of you are familiar with Avi Estelle? Everybody knows who Avi Estelle is? Yeah? Yeah. Well, I talked to my staff, they didn't know, so that's why I didn't know if this would go over well. Who's on first team? Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's what it's like when we're trying to go through standard routines. It's who's on first, I don't know what's on second, Adam was on third, he has another team. That's exactly what we go through as people in our offices to figure out how things should flow through. This eliminates that. Another example I want to throw out is we can identify a suite of standard contract templates, which we're going to work through with Charlotte, across all departments, and develop a standard workflow for these documents. Again, this will allow employees to focus on the contents of the contracts and the accuracy, rather than the process and the flow of the contract. And I'll give you a prime example. I'm going to give this to you, the Saitel contract. It expired December 31st. As a reminder, Saitel is a software consultant that we use for our network services, and we, that contract just expired December 31st. We do not have a signed contract yet, not by desire or really want to, but because we rely on people to execute multiple processes along the way. We rely on the vendor, we rely on the staff at different departments, and when you rely on those people, people tend to drop the ball because they get distracted with other more urgent issues. A contract in this process will be managed by the system, so I can start the contract in the system, the system will deliver it to the next person, the person will be responsible for their department, and they will deliver it to the next person. Eventually, be routed to our Neo consultant, who would sign off on it digitally, and kick it back to me, or whoever is in the department requesting the contract for approval. The efficiencies we gain in an automated electronic system that's kind of managing the workflow for us is tremendous.
Something a huge issue, too, and something that Jay's brought forward, and I, we've all been working on it, is consistency in our staff reports and the product we deliver to YouTube. And I think this could be a huge, you know, this will house a standard template, and we'll have dropdown boxes, and you fill the boxes in, versus going back to, you know, well, we did this five years ago, but now we've updated that template, and now we're going out and grabbing things that are outdated, we've got very outdated practices and language forward unintentionally.
Does this start with, from say January 31st, or whenever you start, is it bringing historic data?
Brand is part of it, is historic data. It's really the, it's the hub that grabbed all this data, will have all these data sources, and it's, it's the hub out to all of this that brings it in, it's a management tool.
And it ties into other current software programs that can be integrated with it as well. So we can hit all of our emails that are sitting there constantly building, and you can attach retention schedules, put it through Laserfish, and again, it ties to the retention schedule. Comes up a review, we can do it.
Yeah, we will come back to that graph, I think, right from the back. The other part I want to make, so that was on the workflow. Next is capabilities and capacity. So you've heard our struggles with public records, and I've had my experience in your work. But this, again, now provides us a one-text-one-search ability for all public records with more capabilities than we currently do now. It also gives us public access to public records. So some entities, some cities will take all their approved public records and actually just put it out there, as John said, on the Laserfish link, that, hey, if you search it here, this is the record we have. Some entities have even taken a step further, said, we don't want to have any networks. We've gotten away from all our networks and storage, and we've put it all on Laserfish system, so everything is public and searchable. Different tiers of what entities are doing now, but we're just trying to get our feet wet to help us relieve this paper burden. Automated, again, automated records retention, I kind of walked through the example of how automates itself, and it integrates with, across all our different platforms. Laserfish, what we've found, is the gold standard out there. Other entities use it in the counties, you have Burton, you have Pauls Bowes went to it. It is the gold standard for record management, workflow, processes development. So this honeycomb-looking chart here, can get added to the integration piece. So Laserfish will integrate with our current software, encode for finance, or integrate with our smart code mining software, they can integrate our course software, our Public Works GIS software, all our Microsoft Office products, so when Sharon says, hey, this is Microsoft Office, this is how we use, they'll interface with that and create a public record system for that piece as well. So I noted that, how that's going to help the courts. Another piece that I heard today from Sharon was how they manage and monitor their workflow with community service program. Again, this could be an e-form on our platform that they fill out, sign there, and flows all the way through. Again, we're not working paper, and they're not losing in the band of us getting back up to Sharon, a lot of unproductive work. The last piece is, I want to bring in the public benefit. Again, e-forms, you guys, I think, can see how they benefit having electronic forms would benefit the public. In particular, I had one good example I thought you guys would appreciate, because we've talked about it several times. Yes, here it is. I want to describe what this practically looks like. We can get, if a customer doesn't e-form for residential parking permits, again, we don't have a parking permits software, we've talked about this before. Does the application online, the system will automatically store the application within the program, identify its appropriate retention schedule, put a timer on for destruction without involving any people or paper, and this means that the city isn't storing this record in a box, in an attic, and when someone comes, someone requests, because then we don't have to go up to the clock tower to find it. So that's a real example I hope you guys can appreciate, because we've talked about a parking permit system. Now, this is going to do all this, but it is a step better, a step better for the public. It also gives, again, the public access, as the mayor pointed out, for those documents we are way to release to the public, just let them search it. Don't have them put in the public records request, put it on the website for public records, link where it's all, it's searchable.
So right now, we only store on our website, I believe, just the last year and a half to two years of our ordinance minutes resolutions, agenda packets, those type of things. This will have the ability, if I understand it correctly, to be almost like a third finger, if you want to do a public record search, most jurisdictions already have it on their website, it'll bring you to a portal to where you can search your own records. You can put all the contracts, all the ordinance, all the minutes, whatever we see most common, we can put it out there, it's searchable. Right now, when we search for documents, it's only searching what we index it, which is the title of the document, not documents, not words housed in the document. So this will eliminate that.
And unless you include past reservations and ordinances?
Absolutely. I'll have everything that I have.
And plus, getting word searchable?
Yes.
Ah.
Yep.
So I'm going to make a push to give this sooner than later, because, A, it touches every department, it creates efficiencies in every department. You've heard about the 4.5 million emails? That makes a huge impact to Brand's department. It makes a huge difference to me, as I was trying to plan to go out there and pay for paperless and all our other processes. It's actually having an invoice in electronic format, where when someone wants it, they can just search it, pull it up, and there it is, rather than having to contact us, meet someone, my AP heard, out to the office, in the tower, pull the invoice, for what purpose we don't know, it might be just to see the date. Incredibly useful waste of time. The other push is, as you guys have read headlines, there is a collective group of people in Washington that look for when cities make mistakes, and don't deliver documents to them, and then they end up suing them, and it's costing the cities hundreds of thousands of dollars. These are real cases, real things, and it's really unfortunate. So this is a program that helps us to reduce that risk. The benefit of going sooner than later is that we don't continue to build the pile of paper. We put a moment in line, in the sense that, hey, going forward, from now on, we can be electronic all these fronts, and we're going to try to capture all the stuff that was back there. Also allows us, as time moves forward, some of those stuff that is reliable, the records retention, maybe we don't get to it right away, but then it's destroyed, so we don't need to worry about it. So there's a risk element. You've heard about the spacing needs. I don't know if you've been into Public Works Department, but they have a whole room of files, paper files, that I believe, given it's system-scanned in, we now have a whole room. I don't know if we've got rooms marked, that you got.
Because six employees in there stacked on top of each other.
Okay, so that's just the Public Works Department. I know we have several rooms also, that are just completely papered. If you've been up to the attic with the mayor's tour, you've seen all the paper files we have up there. It's incredible how much space and storage we're just using for paper and boxes.
Plus, the office shop, there's nobody to access.
Oh, there you go. Another spot.
And all of that ties into the dropped record management policy that is being floated around and incorporates, which is vital to this piece, and the state already recognized that, and has implemented a scan and pass program. So that's, that's the purpose of this, is to get those out of the clock tower into an electronic database of some sort, and continue routinely disposing or archiving vital records.
So for scanning all this, and you were just talking about the bulk of paper that we have, is this something that would, we would contract for scanner, or it'll just be?
Yeah. Right now, we're that, that annex, that the annex, the loft, we, it's worth about $20,000.
$20,000, yeah.
$20,000. We're, we're capturing all of that documents. This is the tool to manage those documents, so that we're not.
So it's not, it's not going to be years to get this process integrated, we're talking about.
No, and that's why I say sooner is better, because the sooner we get it, the sooner we'll stop having to collect stuff, and then have to scan it. We're going to hit it at the first point of contact.
Create the, create the.
Or we'll try to.
Having to go back and fix it.
And so we've talked about how much scanning do we really, once we have it up and running, how much do you want to go back? Well, you start from the earliest and kind of work your way back, but we might find that by the time we get into the ad years, those documents are already past their destruction schedule, so we don't need to worry about this. So it's, again, it's about stopping, stopping the buildup now, and getting in front of this thing. And yes, we have contracted out for scanning for our GIS work, to have all our ASBills fit in, but that's a very focused effort. It doesn't touch the rest of the city, that effort doesn't.
And most departments, DCD, Public Works, the clerk's office, and finance, a couple years ago, already made that initiative that as things come in, we're automatically scanning them. We're not sure what we're going to do with them, but because we haven't implemented the scan and pass program, we can't dispose the record. So we have, like, the permits, I know that DCD has probably, I know more than 50%, not quite sure how much, already scanned in. Most of our records, the clerk's office, 95% is already been scanned, and we've been doing that for years. And then DCD, or, excuse me, Public Works, at some point, they said, hey, we're going to start scanning, it's the backlog, which is what you talked about, our maps we don't have, and we have asset disclosure, this is, I want anything and everything like Sydney, including your utility maps and all of those. So you have to go upstairs and say, okay, which portion of those maps are Sydney? So this, that's going to clean up some of that work, and again, put it into the system.
Now, I want you to think of this more than just as records management. Now, I want you to think of this more than just as a record management system because I, what I really appreciated about the demo was the workflow of process improvements.
Stat efficiencies.
Stat efficiencies, not running around, that the system is pushing this document through and it's not just to deliver it through email or some other channel or hand it in off. Efficiencies will be great. The other piece I think you guys will appreciate, of course, I looked at the cost of this. And so since the chief went first, I appreciate his giant number because ours is much better. And I say ours as a city, because again, this is going to touch every department. So it's not just the general fund. This impacts our enterprise funds. So the cost of this product does, can be shared amongst all our funds. Great news for us. Efficiency will be gained in every department. So the bid I have is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for year one, but that includes the new software product, you know, the implementation, the services. In year two through four, that drops down to forty thousand dollars because now you're just maintaining the services and the servers. So I want you to hold that forty thousand number more than a hundred and seventy. I've solved a hundred and seventy thousand deficit by, if you recall, I have not hired an employee for almost a year. I would propose to use those savings to purchase this program and other savings from other departments.
Where do you spend those?
Don't speak of brag.
You said dick savings, it's not mine. So that's one piece of, I think, of where the funding would come from, the savings, efficiencies in my department and clerks and some of the other departments, as well as it's going to be shared amongst all the departments, all the funds. So from a funding perspective, I'm not concerned. The other piece I want you to hear is the forty thousand dollars going forward. As Brandon pointed out before, if this continues to build up, she's looking at a part-time to full-time employee, right? That we'd have to hire to help us just keep up with compliance. So forty thousand dollars is a lot cheaper than eighty thousand dollar employee with it that's going forward. So I want to keep those kind of thoughts in mind.
When you say servers, you mean like cloud-based servers?
Cloud-based servers, yeah. So I'm having Steve evaluate that, whether we want to post it on our server or go to their cloud-based server. Part of it is the cost benefit analysis. Part of it is the efficiencies you gain when it is on the cloud and they're doing the updates routinely, so you don't have to worry about that, manage that. So right now, it's just quote, have Steve look into what makes the best sense for the city.
Do you think they're using AWS or Amazon Web Services?
AWS.
Do you think they're placing a sub-contract with the council?
That's a cloud service.
Hi.
But I mean, I heard you go on Laserfish's website and hook around. I think you guys will actually be really impressed with what it can do. And it may not mean as much to you guys as it really does to us who are on the operational side. Because we see how this really can impact our data at work.
Rebecca, who's extremely conservative after she went to pregnant, she wouldn't stop talking about it for two days. We can't afford not to do this. It drains me, it diverts me. So we're at one o'clock, that's the end of our time. We had a lot of presentations. I'm sorry, you're not getting my mark. You're out.
I'm good.
You mentioned a lot, you know. So we're just being mindful of that. This has all been great information. And we've got questions for Noah?
I'm not done.
You're not done?
Like, you still, you still have me at lock. No, this is actually a perfect time, perfectly leading because we're going to talk about the videos.
What happens at that?
Well, you might never have. This should be a reminder.
You over?
No.
Just like cancel. I just realized we came to the mayor's study section.
What we have here is a reminder of the comp plan and capital planning. So it puts in appropriate, I believe, working with public works and planning department, the workflow we have for 2020, 21 through 24. Okay? The last budget session we went through this, what is in the comp plan, what are the capital projects that this body is already defining the porting and how are we performing this, what are the timelines? So again, I'm using this as a reminder of the work planning coming forward. You see on the first slide, we're talking about comp plan, the project timeline, PRC vision 2050 in NICS and the primary, we believe, all charging comp plans. But we'll have work going through 2020 with PRC. PRC 2050 planning goes through 2023. And then the city of Orchard picks up a refresher of this comp plan beginning in 2022 and completing it by 2024. What's important in that is you see in the next slide, the work we're doing now, the sewer comp plan, or assuming the water comp plan, creating a stormwater comp plan, NICS developing a parks comp plan, we're going to work on transportation with the transportation committee, and a facilities comp plan, all funneled into the overall city of Orchard comp plan, which will be up in 2022. Moving ahead, that, I have identified for you guys, all the sewer projects that are identified in the comp plan and the current estimate of projects. So you see in 2020, we're going to be working on ready to pump station design and an ad ready for 2021. Base street pump station improvements are kicked out to 2023. We are hopefully going to be completing the pump station number two. We've already completed the design phase in 2019. So 2020, we're really focusing on the marine pump station, getting ad ready, McCormick pump station two, and ensuring that McCormick pump station one is completed. Looking forward in the 21, 22 budget, which we'll talk later in the months, they were refunding the marine pump station, finding hopefully better information later, final costs are going to be for construction as well as EOPR station. On the sewer projects, the important ones to highlight here again are well, this is a project that we are committed to now with our developer agreements. So we're going to be moving forward that in 2020 and 21, as well as monitoring the well 12 pilot hole, make sure that's going forward. And of course, we're currently in, I don't know if it's under construction, but we'll call it under construction for well 13. Again, closely monitor that as possible to come in and hopefully our funding sources match that. But things to be aware. She flips to the next piece, stormwater comp plan. What we decided in the 1920 budget was that since we did not have a good comp plan, we had a bunch of stormwater capital projects, but we weren't really sure how it fitted. We committed the public works department to work on the comp plan to come up with a good stormwater comp plan that identified the capital improvement projects that we were moving forward with along the dark of these streets. So we're continuing that body of work. Flipping over to the parks and facilities project timelines. Upcoming this summer, we're going to be working on the more splash pad retrofit. Again, this is a part of our development agreement for water. We also have city hall. I have a long timeline on that because right now we're going to design, we're in the early phases of what that looks like. So it's going to be a few years out. We'll continue to talk about that. And I also have on here the community center. Very important points, taking up staff resources and mayor's time, all the work with the PFD to do that. Lastly now, based the transportation projects timeline. We've quote, completed three months from a construction standpoint. We're still in the closed-out phase. So we've got staff working on that, but for all intents and purposes, we feel like it's fairly complete. We got base street right away acquisition coming. And then for 2020, we don't have any other major capital projects for transportation. Now, I think that's okay. I think that's great in fact, because of all the other projects we have going on. And sometimes we need a breather to really regroup and figure out what's going on. It also gives us the opportunity to focus on our transportation committee, set priorities, mission divisions, all those kind of things, as well as focusing on our annual maintenance preservation program.
And we're still developing plans in specs for those two complete overlay projects. One is Sydney from Cedric headed south, and the other is Liverpool Street. And we want to know if we've got enough money to behave both of those and fill a lot of the, the being good, you know, as a package or as bid alternates to select one if, if anything was priced into.
And I just want to remind the council that the transportation project timeline here reflects our six-year tip. And so if you go to that document, go here to base street alarm. Which that means is that 21 and 22, you see you have a lot of projects that are planned. It's just a lot of yellow out there. So we'll continue to talk about that over the next couple of months with the transportation. Lastly, I have a whole holistic snapshot of all the projects from, from this current by 1920, as well as 21 and 22, looking forward. So you've got one place to go and see all the capital projects that we are planning and working on. So there's really two whole topics, I think, hopefully heard from you today, is this piece is really on the capital side. Everything, of course, focuses on us operationally. We need to invest in ourselves as well as investing in capital projects. So we're putting forth these proposals so you guys hopefully support what we're doing for the city. I'm going to continue to push this message in the budget process and tell you guys to tell me to stop. But again, to focus on our current comp plan and prioritize our resources for those projects, which means no new projects. And we'll put forth a 21, 20 budget that focuses on those efforts only. And that's going to be really important when we come to the water and sewer capital funding because we will have to have some difficult discussions about how much capital funding we have available for those projects as well as transportation. So no new projects. Again, we will continue to maintain a list of projects that will carry us forward. We'll also call it the mayor's project list. And Steve will continue, state staff will continue to report the work of the mayor, as well as council on our capital projects, our successes and our setbacks. And with that, I think this is a good transition to hand it over to Nick. So we're going to talk about comp plan.
Quick question about the, I mean, the last.
Just a quick question. We really don't expect any additional funds out of this legislative session. We, you know, it's not the overspay.
Yeah.
We're not going to have to catch the buyout of a couple of bills. One is about comp plan, realignment dates. There really isn't any money that we have, I don't believe, in this session.
Okay.
All right, while I'm passing it out, I just wanted to start out by saying that I wanted to give a presentation on, with my staff, my homework, and telling me what everybody is doing. But I really wanted to focus on more long-range and ongoing projects. And uh.
Slammer, finance?
Wow.
No.
But my, my staff is incredibly talented. They do a lot with a little. They're independent. They're self-starters. They don't require a ton of my attention. They come to me when they have issues, but smart go really helps manage the workflow so that I can roll up my sleeves and actually pull out with a lot of the work volume that we have. So I'm passing out right now, a couple of things. There's the comp plan presentation and, and chart that shows our, our timeline of projects over the coming two years period. And then there's also the list of the map showing the location of all of our current projects, which is kind of a more, I think, a total number of units there, 4,300 residential units in this. And then of course, a number of commercial projects which are, are more difficult to quantify coming from the department. So jumping into the presentation, I'm going to talk about the work that our department does in the regional planning context, our long-range planning projects, short-range planning, code enforcement, and the building department. On page three of the presentation, this is a graphic that I took from PSRC that kind of shows the regulatory context in which we work, which is growth management act that informs everything that we, we do in the planning department. Vision 2050, which is during adoption at PSRC, I think is supposed to be adopted in April. And we have previously commented on that through the, the adoption process over the last two years. That sets the multi-county planning policies, which then come to the KRCC where we adopt our regional, our countywide planning policies. And then, of course, we adopt our local comprehensive plans from there. And there could be another hexagon there that, that shows development regulations with budget where we actually implement these policies that ultimately flow from the state to the regional level, to the county level and down to the city. Page four, a lot of what is in this presentation is a, is a result of a trend that is occurring throughout the region. The, the vision 2050 plan is planning for 1.8 million more people between 2017 and 2015. And so we're getting our share of that certainly. And, you know, all the cities in the region are dealing with a lot of the same challenges that we are. We've had annexed a lot of areas over the last decade. I think we, our challenges are, are different because of how much land we have relative to how few residents we have and how much development activity is going on and is possible in our city at this time. In terms of regional planning, I mentioned that the vision is scheduled for adoption soon. We're, we're about 50% of the way through our comp plan periodic update cycle. We adopted our comp plan in 2016. The next one has to be adopted in 2024. So we're at the midway point and this is where the work at the regional level is happening. And then in two years, we're going to start our comprehensive plan updating process. We are also currently, and I'm working with SOVI and Triangle through KRCC on countywide planning policies. We've, we've updated one of the elements of the countywide planning policies where we are kind of finalizing that and getting it ready for ratification. There's going to be a second phase of work on the countywide planning policies where we've proposed, and I believe it's agreed that we're going to hire a consultant that is going to go through and do a gap analysis looking at the new vision, state law, and making sure that the countywide planning policies are updated and consistent before we move forward with our, our comprehensive plans. Now, going to population and employment numbers, if you remember in 2016, we were allocated 8,235 residents that we had planned for between 2010 and 2036. And we had planned for 3,132 jobs. We have consistently hit our share on a per-year basis. We're, we're bringing in about 200 to 300 residents. And I think 2019, when we see the OFM numbers, it's actually going to be higher due to the number of housing starts that we have had recently. But we are right on track in terms of pulling our weight in, in terms of growth performance. When we do the 2024 comprehensive plan, we are going to be given a new allocation that will be from 2024 through 2044. So it's a 20-year planning target. And I believe that we're looking at anywhere between 8,000 and 12,000 more residents that we have planned for, for that 20-year period, and probably 3,000 to 5,000 jobs. And that's going to be worked out at the countywide level. And if you were at the retreat with the KRCC retreat, you heard that Bainbridge doesn't want a lot of that growth, then they will let Orchard take more than it has historically. So there's going to be some pressure for growth to go to the south end. And that's, that's of course challenging for us because of our infrastructure needs and all of the capital projects that Noah's identified, which are just the tip of the iceberg in terms of what is needed to, to support this level of growth.
Is that 2024 to 2024?
No, it's, it's going to be a new number from that point forward.
Okay. Cause I know when we've talked, we've talked for vision 2050, we've talked about 15,000 for us in our UGA.
I, I, the UGA allocation will be an additional number from that new test. So it's probably eight for the city and six for the UGA. And it could be higher if Bainbridge takes less of that growth.
But I don't believe it's, it's not adding 15 on top of the eight. Our new number is 15. We're previously at the eight.
No, our previous number was eight. We're going to have grown by about 3,000 to 4,000 over that eight-year period. And we're going to get a new 8,000 people we have planned for.
It's still 8,000 people.
And that's, and that has nothing to do with expanding the UGA or annexing.
But it's not, it's not compiling it on top of. It's a, it's a new number we're growing for from that day forward to the next planning period.
Correct. Right. And it's separate from the numbers we've been talking about at the point that we did the exercise at the retreat.
What do you mean separate? I, I think this is the number we talked about at the retreat.
Right. But this is going out to 2015, you're talking.
Correct. We only go out 20 years in our plan. So it's, it's prodate for that first period of time.
And then I'll, I'll be interested to hear more about Bainbridge' push to keep population out of their high density at some point.
Well, and the feeling that I have is they're willing to take some growth in, are in Winslow. And what they really don't want growth in other parts of the island. And they're feeling like 4,000 people is about what they want to see in Winslow, which is their proportionate share is closer to 2,000 as well. So they're looking to push some of that off on their, on their gear stations.
Well, the market portion is going to determine why we're going to rotate this up here.
Sure.
So anyway.
We're planning, if you're right, the market is going to determine, and if these numbers run through, we'll lose our seat at PSRC. That's okay. Because we won't have a job surplus. You know, if we grow by 8,000 people and 3,000 jobs, we have 2,000 more jobs than workers right now. We'll be pushed at bounds. But who knows what's, I think the county, you know, the county campus is growing. That's going to create jobs. It's, many of these factors are beyond our control, but it's a planning issue.
And if Bainbridge pulls that eight, then their, their market will change to, well, should change.
You should. You've got to look at it more formally.
Yes.
All right. So moving on to slide number six, long-range planning. At the present time, we are managing more long-range planning projects than we've ever had. had one time in our history. Long-range planning is handled by our long-range managers, Gary and I. And we did hire him recently, he's helping us a little bit here and there with these projects. But it's really a two-person show, and, you know, we are really feeling the pressure to get a lot of things done, and some of these have very firm deadlines, other things are somewhat more flexible. And we're going to do our best we can to manage this over the next year. Just to touch on a few, we'll have our annual comp plan amendment process. We have a July 2021 deadline to update our short-line master program regulations. We just signed a contract Tuesday for the downtown subarea plan and land action EIS, and that's got to be done by a year, a little past a year from now, I think. The contract ends with the Department of Commerce on April 1st. Realistically, we've got to be done with most of the work by December in order to send it forward for formal adoption in the spring. The Ruby Creek Subarea Plan, which I know, I've heard from Councilmember Chen at least, that we don't love that name. I'm still open to suggestions for what to call that area there at Sidney and Sedgwick. We are doing quite a bit on that planning exercise. We have some graphic work being done by our intern, and we had a small contract to have some site planning exercises prepared by Makers Architecture. And we're just going out for public outreach to the residents of the apartments out there and to the landowners in that area. We have had quite a few meetings with developers in that area, Rush at the corner of Sidney and Sedgwick still owns that empty pad, and they're looking at about a 50-unit development with some good workspace. And there's a 222-year apartment project proposed at the intersection of Hugbee, which you would see on your map. And that is, we have water and sewer challenges that are very real in that area.
By the way, gradually on that pad with its own property.
The dual property target.
In addition, we're picking up our parks plan next Tuesday, and a consultant. Our hope is that he really takes leadership on that so that that doesn't become a management issue for our department so much as the consultant is taking the lead. And we expect that to be done by the summer. We're coordinating with all the water system planning efforts, sewer system plans, stormwater plans, that our department is either in the middle of or just getting started on. And where we need into that is we have to make land use projections for what growth we know about, what growth we expect. The land capacity in those areas, and really maybe they're sizing, they're modeling and sizing things correctly for what growth they anticipate. So we're getting close on the water plan. I think that'll be done by this summer. And obviously, the stormwater plan, as we mentioned, is just getting started. As part of the 2024 comp plan process, we have to do an updated buildable lands analysis. This is something that we work with the county on, and it's pretty resource-intensive. We can either do it in-house and hire our own consultants, or last time we paid the county for an interlocal agreement to do that analysis for us. It's about $15,000 for work. And we may, because we went through a form-based code, it's going to be a more challenging exercise next year because we aren't density-based in our development regulations. We have to make some assumptions and figure out how to do that analysis, and so we may end up doing that ourselves this time around. We're also continuing with the appeal that we filed with the county comp plan. There's the transportation implementation strategy that we, the mayor and Councilmember Ashby attended just a week and a half ago. So we're still participating in that plan development. We also found out the county is adopting county impact fees, and we're very interested to see what projects they're putting on that study so that we make sure that developers are funding improvements in areas where we may annex in the future. And then lastly, in a recent staff meeting, actually talking about this retreat, we discussed the need to update our city capital facilities plan, which will tie into our 2024 update. And that is likely something that would be a consultant exercise going forward, bring in somebody and really do a comprehensive inventory of what we have, what we need, and really kind of organize all these, the city hall projects, you know, public works that, and really get it into one document in anticipation of the 2024 comp plan adoption. The mayor touched on recent accomplishments, I won't go into that. As far as development regulations, we are under contract, we're finishing up our traffic impact fee study. And as part of the parks plan, we're actually going to be adopting, we're going to be calculating a new parks impact fee. The traffic fee is somewhat hung up depending on how negotiations with McCormick go because there's still this old Gen 1 reimbursement issue, and we still expect to complete that this year, but we need to have some conversations with the developers in conjunction with that project. We also, last year, we were working on the multi-country tax exemption ordinance. That is ready to go to one of committees. We are waiting for committees, so we can schedule that going forward into this year. I don't know whether Finance or Economic Development or Land Use ought to be the group that discusses that, but I'll get with the chairs in each of those committees and see who wants to have that from their meeting. The mayor mentioned a temporary signs in the right-of-way issue. And the Ninth Circuit Court, actually, after the Supreme Court made the read ruling about content neutrality, the Ninth Circuit issued a new ruling about two years ago that said cities can regulate on the basis of commercial speech, which is different from protective speech. So if we want to go down the road of revisiting our temporary signs in the right-of-way and having code enforcement enforce that, that's something that we could do, but we've got to squeeze it into our agenda this year.
And you see them, the advertisement signs that look the size of a political sign, and they're stuck all over in the right-of-way. We previously learned, thought we couldn't regulate that. Now we've learned we can regulate it. You know, it's not going to be the biggest priority for code enforcement, but these public works or, as they're about, could pick those up if we change our code. I think they're, you know, I think they're politically primed in other places.
We should probably just time that around the election season so that we're not making changes right in the middle of people figuring out their signs. But I think that towards the end of this year, we should be looking at that. Additionally, significant trees and tree canopy is still an issue with the planning commission. We thought we were close to the finish line last September, but that's gotten a little bit sideways because the different planning commissioners have different ideas about what they want, and we're not all on the same page in terms of what our purpose is. So we're kind of taking a step back, and we're going to try to bring that forward again this year, but it's been more contentious than we expected, and we're working on it. Finally, with all the erosion control issues we've had at a couple of sites, Stessin Heights and Blueberry specifically, the Department of Ecology had a meeting with us to try to better understand our processes. They have made some recommendations for process and code changes that they think we ought to make to better protect ourselves from these types of things happening in the future. And so there is some pressure to revisit the stormwater drainage permit and land stewardship activity permit chapters next year, and are in this coming year. And so that's a joint public works and planning effort, but as far as timing, we really don't. We've got to find some time to squeeze that in, but it's a pretty major project. Finally, the mayor also asked that I have a discussion of building, the building department specifically, because we operate with one building inspector. I've included four charts on slides eight and nine. First of all, despite the moratorium, we had 192 housing starts in 2019, which is far above anything we've done in the last five years. If you look at inspection volumes per year, they are far above anything we've done in past years. And actually, our in-house inspector is doing more compared to Code Pro's, our consultant inspector, which is down actually from previous years' work despite the overall load being higher. That's actually been related to some injuries and sick leave issues with our inspector. The other issues in the building department that are going on right now, we do have to adopt new building codes by June 30th of this summer, and that's the 2018 IDC is likely ready for adoption. We also, with the courthouse, the community event center, potential city hall improvements, and if we have these mixed-use projects downtown, it is likely we're going to need to hire a special inspector specific to those projects. And if you remember, last year, they adjusted our building permit fees to make sure that those high-duty projects will bring in enough revenue to cover those costs. And so that is a consultant selection that we need to do this year. But in terms of staffing, I was told just a couple of days ago that our building inspector is now contemplating retirement sooner than he had planned. That is obviously concerning, and one of the things I learned is that our building inspector sometimes does 30 inspections in a single day. The industry average is 10 to 12, sometimes as high as 17 if things are in close proximity. But we're getting a lot out of our inspector because he has a lot of knowledge and he's able to get to things. He probably also is a little quick to fail people if they're five minutes late, or if something's out of work, he says, "Don't fail," and takes off, which maybe is a little lacking on service, but gets the volume that we need in terms of inspections. But, you know, we did 3,600.
My name is Jager, so.
We did 3,600 inspections last year, which is an average of 12 per day, and that's not including a leave type of things. He's also doing plan reviews, which with the moratorium, we actually had no plan reviews for a series of months, and he was doing nothing but inspections. So he looked at the volume over the last two years, it's extremely high. In 2015 and 2016, I included a chart showing our consulting cost for Code Pros compared to what percentage of our inspector was out on leave. There were some medical issues in 2015 and 2016, which caused Code Pros, despite the health pain volumes, were significantly different. In 2017, we had a period where we had a lot of applications coming at once, and we were having weekly review times, and so we paid the consultant to actually do the extra reviews to try to get through our backlog. And so we had quite a bit of cost just in plan review in 2017. But in 2018 and 2019, it really has been inspection volumes related to the projects that we have, because we've been keeping up with plan reviews a little better over the last two years. And what that shows, and I included the $50,000 that we paid our fire marshal and looking at Code Pros at $17,500 in 2019, but we spent over $30,000 in 2017. You know, we're spending a pretty sizable share of what an FTE would cost to potentially give us those same level of services. And we also, when we get to the project announced, you're going to see how many projects are coming in. And I think we need to have a very real conversation as part of our staffing needs analysis, which HR is going to be doing, but we need to look functionally at how our building department operates. We don't actually have a certified building official on staff. The Code Pros has a building official that we can use, but we don't have that skill in-house. And the fire marshal is its own issue, and it actually potentially could relate to this issue of fire flow stacking versus nested storage that we have. And so I think there's a very important conversation that needs to be had about the future of our building department and what a potential retirement in the next year or so. This is the time that we need to be having that conversation. Going on to code enforcement, you know, Doug actually took some carpentry classes and for a while was helping us with inspections, but with the erosion control issues at Stessin Heights, he has been too busy to even really help out on the building side of things. Our priorities are still to obey one to two dangerous buildings annually, and we've got a special emphasis where we're dealing with code enforcement at nearly every property on a proper road, which has been a perpetual problem for the city. Stessin Heights and Blueberry are a mess right now, and we are working with the Department of Ecology, you know, there is up. I mentioned the temporary signs in the right-of-way, which if we pass a change, that would increase Doug's, you know, patrolling and going to pick enough signs and going to storing them. And then there's quite a few code updates related to code enforcement that are still needed. Nuisances, the chapter that actually gives our code enforcement officer the authority to issue citations, there's regulations that are needed there. And then Jennifer Robertson, when we asked her to handle a couple of land use issues, she pointed out that we really need a catch-all enforcement chapter entitled 20 that includes Scott board orders and what our process is for pumping the brakes on a project when they have problems like we've seen in Stessin Heights and Blueberry, and really ensuring that we have due process protections. And so that is something that I've asked Doug to include in his work plan for the next two years to address. So just to summarize, I guess I know that they look like me, I just don't like Dick Brown, that's drowning on 1811. But the, our department's handling.
I'll take you.
Our department is handling six major projects right now for long-range planning. Our permit activities at record levels. We're still dealing with McCormick Woods, which is a huge amount of time just to negotiate and work to hammer out these development agreements. The community center, the community event center that we're planning was not really something that I anticipated in last year's work plan, and managing that contract with the consultant and keeping that going in the right direction. There's a couple of ways we can do that. Either the consultant we hired can designate a project manager that is separate from the design team manager that will help kind of shepherd this thing through the process. Alternatively, the city could look at bringing on its own independent consultant who manages that project and is paid for out of the funds that we have, which would ensure that I'm not having to spend a quarter of my time trying to make that project go forward.
We are issuing a consequence, them having, the team bringing forward a partner manager.
It does, it does. And I wanted to just point that out to the city council in case you feel that there's value to having somebody independent as opposed to having all under one contract. I think there's pros and cons to either approach.
I guess that's an important conversation, because I'm taking it to PFE Monday for, to keep them in the loop. I don't need their blessing, and I want to bring it to you guys Tuesday night.
Why don't you bring it to the PFE before they go to something?
Because they need one to month. And I don't have, I don't need their, it's just informational. This is the draft of the RFE we're getting ready to issue. I'm not on their agenda, I'm going in their public comment period just to brief them that we're not sitting on our hands, we are moving on issues related to.
I would show it. You have the reference, and I just don't think that's right. It's a little against the logic.
It's in this draft. It's not, I'm not asking for their approval.
I wouldn't just sit there and say, this is a time on their issue, and they're arguing. We'd be discussing with anybody who wants to come along and join us.
Okay.
You know, the other major issue, I mean, the site management at Blueberry Ridge at Stessin is sucking a lot of time from a lot of my staff who are having to go out and inspect, deal with erosion control issues, we're trying to initiate enforcement. We've had multiple meetings with the Department of Ecology. But just, you know, unfortunately, I feel like a couple of bad developers are going to kind of ruin things for the good developers because we can't, we can't, we either have to, we have a plan for the worst-case scenario, and I think that's going to end up frustrating a lot of people in our community. Either that, or we're going to have a weaker response in these places in the future. So that's part of this discussion on stormwater and land stewardship activity permits, chapter updates that we have coming this year. So finally, I mentioned the 4,300 housing units. I provided a map. It's, there's so many projects, we have written them into actually three pages this year, and so if you could really zoom in on different areas in the city. The couple of things that I really want to touch on, we're going to see groundbroken at McCormick North a day for the first 88 homes off of Pigley Road there. And I believe that this quadrant is closed on McCormick communities to build those homes. One of the smaller projects that we have to also deal with this year is quadrant has identified a few minor issues in the design standards that they'd like us to talk about, and so we're going to get those to the planning commission here soon. Additionally, McCormick West, I just got the call from the engineer that they are designing their first phase in McCormick West, and that's because they have to, as part of the water system improvements at the Well 12 Campus, they're going to be extending that transmission main through McCormick West, and as long as they're putting in road rates, they want to go ahead and take advantage of that cost and work on our first phase of a project there. So I think we're going to see groundbreaking there in the next year. They have submitted a preliminary plaque on parcel A at McCormick, which is right in the corner of the entrance of McCormick Woods. And I will tell you, the biggest concern that I hear from people in McCormick Woods is about the loss of the trees in that very area. No, I think that this is a new preliminary plaque as opposed to something that's probably under development in this, and so this is going to be one of the more contentious projects that we've ever seen in our city, and that's probably going to go to hearing in the middle of this year.
From what's west?
Parcel A.
Show us which one.
Yeah, number three, project number 46.
Yeah. And they don't have, they're going to have to go through hearing jam.
Oh, you're going to have.
No, it's a new, that was always a feature of the tractor. Anyway, other projects on map two, I mentioned the vacant apartment development project 38 on Sidney and then the rush project 39. 38, 39, those are, I think, 30. Those are, I think thirty-eight is in a feasibility period right now, and they've got some pretty advanced designs, I don't know what they want to do there, I think that's actually a hundred and twenty-two units, but there are sewer capacity and water capacity issues that require further improvements, or it's gonna be put on hold until the city builds.
Thirty-seven also is with Lenora project.
Yeah, and then thirty-seven, Lenora is working with Roman and Roman, and we're probably sixty percent of the way through the roundabout design, and Sedgwick is paid for privately. And so that, getting approval to build that roundabout was a condition of a purchase and sale that they have for parcel thirty-seven, and actually sell that for a massive apartment project.
Five hundred units.
The access is also secure.
Yeah, it'll actually probably, and probably it's gonna connect in some way through the south over in Geiger as well.
Probably off the backside of that.
Like a right-in-line.
That should help with traffic.
Yeah. Project sixteen on the map, on the same map, is Blueberry Ridge, where we're having a lot of issues right now, and next week we're having a very much pre-which is the Geiger plat for fifteen additional blocks.
Fifteen, but sixteen, that's not-
That's the third grade that's going on right now.
Right, it's not the, what's the?
Endazio?
Endazio.
Correct. So you can see Endazio on my photos right here, but that's fully built out.
Right.
Is there a revocation process for approvals on their loan conditions?
That's probably a big question for Charlotte. I think that there is revocation of permits in the event that they're not following conditions, like erosion control issues.
Situation there.
Yeah, I was saying, I spent a lot of money on lawyer fees to put on that road. The other two big projects, thirty-five and thirty-six, just to the east of Red Meyer, are, appear to be going forward, and in there, you know, there's, between the two of them is about a hundred and seventy-four units on those two sites. I think it's combined, and I see that she duplicated the number rather than separating them up, but I don't think they're far enough along to have an accurate count, but it's certainly over a hundred units, well over a hundred units on those two sites. The last thing I wanted to point out is, you know, we talked about even defund all of our improvements, and we're doing the traffic impact de-study update. I think since we did that traffic impact de-study in 2015, construction costs are probably twenty something percent higher, far above inflation. If we adjust our construction costs for inflation and add the battle project as it's now defined in our fee, I think you're gonna see a traffic impact decalculations, potentially around four thousand dollars unless you choose to remove projects from that list. Right now, we're at twenty-five-hundred per single-family house, but we've got, you know, forty-three-hundred units here, that's roughly eleven and a half million dollars in traffic impact fees, and then it goes, increase up to about four thousand, it's about seventeen million dollars in traffic impact fees. And our total project list is still a hundred million dollars in projects that are on our tip. So just to keep that in the back of your mind as you're considering how much is happening, when it's happening, and what our needs are, you can harness the potential of all this development in a good economy, and we're-
We're a small stretch of tree, almost forty million dollars. Put it to your perspective.
Exactly, that was fifteen.
Well, you know, interesting, when you mentioned that, and once again, I don't know if anybody else got to see Secretary's brief meeting with the Senate, but one of the issues that he raised to the Senate was that there's a lot of impacts that aren't captured in impact fees to the highways. And he's introducing that, and I'm, you know, when I look at that large market complex off the front of Harris, this is a perfect example. You could look at your partners at City and Cleveland or City and Sedgwick. You know, we're all, at the state, we come into a roundabout, something's exits and entrances to highway sixteen, and his response will be, "Well, you caused the problem, why are you looking to us to fix it?" And I only raise that because I would not at all be surprised if the state legislature doesn't come down with something that says, "Local communities, you've got to contribute for us, the solution is not that you're gonna pay for it, but you need to at least contribute." And he cited a development in Spokane where they commented through EIS on the deed for a local friendly program, about sixty-five million. The local community said, "Oh, no, we're not gonna worry about it." They let the developer go forward and build. Now the impact is on like ninety, that the state is gonna be absolutely in over four-hundred billion dollars to build the interchanges to respond to the impact that this developer that could have dealt with at sixty-five, so it's kind of two ways. I just raised it as the state is looking at these kinds of things and wanting to say, "Don't forget us."
But it's a catch point, too, because PSRC is saying, "You shall get eight thousand more jobs, and you shall-"
Agreed.
And we only have a certain amount of bandwidth, so we can't be able to deny it, and tell PSRC they're not gonna provide the land use to do.
Pay the ground.
It's just a catch point.
But remember, on Sedgwick, we included the two roundabouts to provide access to the local streets in our impact decalculations, but we chose not to include Sedgwick between sixteen and battle. So that's something that you can consider, if we're gonna take some responsibility to at least collect the fees for that project, that can be baked into our impact de-study going forward, and it's roughly the same project that we did on Tremont in terms of length and intersections, it's a twenty-three-million-dollar project, and we only have one chance to collect mitigation from the developers.
I only raise it because you talked about, you didn't look at traffic impact fees earlier, and then you showed us all of these projects that are gonna be impacted, and it's triggered by Roger Malars' brief meeting with the Senate, "Don't forget us when you develop area cap fees."
And we might legislation the-
And I think you would go-
We're gonna legislation the-
Yeah.
Too much for a federal housing administration.
Yeah.
But save the time, I think we need to jump right into marks.
Probably be, maybe ten minutes, somebody has background schedule.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock. No, this is strategic, please, line seven o'clock.
Sir, give me ten minutes.
One forty-six.
So what you have in your packet, I'm not gonna overuse, because we've done, it's been talked about a thousand, it's just water, sewer, storm, transportation, street, and kind of this one is, feel free to stop by my office, we have specific questions, these are updates. I think the important thing on this is that we're gonna be adding a project that's based on this presentation, the three-ninety reservoir for those projects to be down to water efficiency, and then just well-thirteen isn't gonna accommodate or any storage as well. And so that's gonna have to be the capital, new capital project, let's say higher car already added to this. You can do that as a, just do it in cities, or we can look at cities and look at the top of the map. So other than that, if you have questions specific to this, come to the evening, but, you know, the only thing that's new that we added this year, last year we got some other names, staff behind certain passes, and so you can see that there are several staff members that are absolutely slammed, trying to, you know, they got a lot of them on the planet, so feel free to talk to me about this. You also have in your packet, first time you've done, what we've created for water, sewer, streets, storm, parks, kind of some major accomplishments, the shop, just the shop is completed, so just in your leisure tonight, and you can't skate, pull this out. Look through those, you'll see, you know, for thirteen people, there's an amazing amount of work that's being done. And just remember, when you look at those, this is all in addition to the streets, we have snow, ice, meter reading, you know, step, sewer response in the corner, cleaning cafeces, cleaning ponds, doing, you know, road vegetation, lift station and water station constant maintenance, you know, changing, kind of having pump going out, electrical issues or marquee electrical issues. Yeah, but the biggest thing is, you know, pump stations, I don't think people recognize how often we have an electric issue, and before I came here, we hired Roman Electric for everything, and Casebo to do all our work. We now have an electrician, that's the great news, the bad news is he can't take a vacation, he can't leave, because we're constantly having, because we've taken the electrician not just managing all of our pump station controls, but also we've taken Skada, that used to be with ESI, and he's focusing that, so we're gonna need a second electrician at some point, because we're taking ownership and we get more and more infrastructure with, you know, we do well, we get a new pump, it's a new electrical control system, new pump station, it's a new electrical control system. So I'd say that's probably the biggest need in the public list moving forward. And the other thing I'd like to just mention, two things that came up today, we talked about PIO and city being responsible, I want to put a chat in on that, that in this particular case that brought up the most recent unrest, that was just for traffic control. So if you just send energy or wave cable or accounting or anybody else in the down there, they don't have them, they don't have problems, because they're not closing the road, they simply have traffic control. And so we need to be very careful in what policies we develop, we develop as far as expectation, if it's gonna be an expectation that the city's gonna have to manage a lot and do some sort of nursing at the time we're gonna go, when the street street around, or kind of vegetation, things that we do all the time with just back control.
Mark, that's not being sent at all.
Well, I was-
We talked about this yesterday.
Okay, I was just saying.
Not being sent at all.
We need to, this is a quick story. The other thing is the court's presentation of community service, that's all really great, it's great that they're saving that kind of money, but is that a cost to our apartment? Because everyone is better shepherding these.
But we funded it, we funded an FTE that you have, so they go hand in hand.
But we're still losing, we have a currently living, like, duty individual that's doing that.
But we funded an FTE.
And, well, it's being utilized. So I'm just saying, it isn't just community services, you know, it's a great program, there is an additional cost that wasn't presented, that's all I'm saying. And that's all I got. Any other questions?
We've got probably business in forty-four seconds.
Where are we with the pavement management system?
What we're doing right now with the pavement management system is, we now have Chris Hammer, which replaced Mike Pleasant, he has experience in the city of Bambridge, where they do more of a force account type spec, where we're not having to survey and do a full set of plans, it's more of a unit-based program, so he and Ian are working together on a few pavement projects to get that actually out on the street here in a couple of months. So we'll get those paid this year, depending where the costs come in, but we're gonna save money on the design side, because he already has the template to do that worst-performance based unit price. But also we're gonna have that section, because we have a call survey around, we still are going to survey, because we have the budget from Sunset to South Isabelle or Huttering, so that we can at least get that survey, and then Ian can be working, and Chris may be working on that, because that's, because that's a complete street, that's-
We're missing a second of sidewalk there, which has to have some stormwater improvements, and there's a water line that you can see it replaced right underneath it, so.
Yeah, we have a water line, and we wanted to upgrade while we're doing three months of that, so we're gonna repair it potential facts, and we couldn't touch it, so it kind of has a non-standard termination, so, but we're gonna get that survey then. As far as the pavement management system in general, again, Chris for Bambridge wrote their road safety plan, so we're taking, he's gonna write our road safety plan, and that'll give us access to funds, and we're gonna combine ADA transition plan, the pavement management system, and this road safety plan in our tip, and then we'll have that computation ready when the transportation community or company convenes, and then we'll be looking through that also, so it'll be a very comprehensive presentation of all the documents that we have, so that you're being-
A more scientific, remember, the pavement management system is really just a tool in evaluating all of our streets and subgrades, and it's one of the criteria we need to use as we decide what streets we're gonna pave, because just because it's on the surface the worst condition, isn't necessarily where we need to put our resources, because what's underneath there is part of the equation, what stormwater infrastructure, water line or other, so we need a coordination of our ADA transition plan and our pavement management system and our storm and sewer and water needs, and because the last thing we wanna do is put a new sidewalk down and pave the street, and come back next year and put a water line in, you know, so.
Is it a complete street or just an overlay?
Conversely, the worst thing we wanna do is, we're not gonna pave the street till we get this all figured out, so for the next seven years, you're gonna be driving through puddles.
For the next seven years, you're probably, probably dealing with patches until we, because we're, if we overlay that street, we're probably not gonna fix the water line. All of these things need to be coordinated, that's what I'm trying to say.
Agreed, but at some point, we gotta get something done, other than just, we're starting into that, so.
Yeah, I hear you.
Actually, we got quite a bit.
So maybe it's a matter of seeing some of those results that we have, and see the prioritization, whether that would play a role.
To be honest, Tremont was our, was it, I mean, we can't manage anymore.
Remember, we need to do one twenty-five million a year, because we, we already, we own Red, so every year we're behind, it's fantastic.
Three hundred, three hundred people.
And then we lost two hundred of those.
So I was gonna mention, Mark mentioned the very beginning of his presentation about this new reservoir by Fred Meyer, that we need additional storage, and the reason we need that is because we're not allowed to nest our storage, which is the fire authorities' requirement. They said that they will allow nesting if we had fire sprinklers on all of our houses, but it seems to me that we're gonna need, our water system costs are gonna be extremely high unless we can get to a place where we're nested, because it either requires us to change our fire authority code for potentially consider fire sprinklers and the savings to the city's water system by now having to fill up all this additional capacity to meet their, you know.
I think we all know what it was like in our council meeting if we were abandoning our water systems. Well, the building industry would be in trouble, so just prepare yourself.
Right, because the building industry, I was just saying, it's a fifty-thousand-dollar app, and early it's a two, three, so.
Some of it in the life.
And it may come out in the state building codes in the next three years, that this is gonna be required statewide anyway, which would potentially solve this problem, but anyways, food for thought on water system funding issues.
From a capacity issue, that's the, versus staff, that's a huge. Now, one option that we have instead of building this three-ninety, is that we could actually own pump stations at each one of our reservoirs, that allows us to use an entire volume rather than just the operational storage, so that's-
We're down, we're down in the weeds, and I believe this three-ninety thing will be solved by the government, because it's not gonna be, the connection fees will cost mainly one to two improvements, so, and we're, so we're down in the weeds, it's all the same back, and, a couple of questions for Mark, not related to, you know, pavement management system specific, we're now higher level stuff.
This looks great for four thousand.
I agree, and a lot of this is being driven on to us, not things to be controlled.
It also doesn't look great to our budget, something's gotta give. You can either pay for a whole sprinkler, or you can pay through a cap fee through the water system somehow, something you gotta pay.
It's gotta get paid, right? Yep, don't disagree. Okay, so we're gonna take a five-minute break, give the staff that wants to take off, they're welcome to, are you welcome to stick around? Your call. So, got a lot of information, we could, I think I know what we should do, but I'm gonna ask you, there's two different, do we wanna focus on policy directives, which I probably don't think we should, or the things, it's more about prioritizing, everything's taking money, I think that's probably the bigger discussion, and then Sophie did a great job here putting up those guiding principles as we're talking through stuff. So if the focus is gonna be on funding, things that are costing money, I know that NOAA will by February, in particular, probably at that finance meeting, committee meeting, and then be reported out, will have twenty nineteen queued up, will know what, we, you know, we already had in revenue, we already had expenses, I know we've spent a bit of it already, because we, it's very good, where we had a record here, and we've controlled expenses very well, so we've got a little bit of money to spend, and like I said, we've spent some of it, we just did that master planning exercise, and so we've got some other things that we should be able to consider. to consider later this year. It's not going to hurt to prioritize, I think, those immediate priorities. And the things that we, that are towards the bottom of the list are probably automatically going to roll into the next budget process. And if we, and then if we have time today, let's look at a high level too, at priorities, as we're trying to develop that next biannual budget. And we'll have more conversation about that stuff as we, at future work settings, is I think where we bring some of that, that continued this way. So with, does that sound recent, has shaken this way?
Yes.
Okay. So, one of my concerns is, are you comfortable with the direction I've taken in my job, and I'm engaging more on a regional and state level? The backside to that is, I'm not in the office as much. And if that's going to be the case, I have been handing some of those responsibilities to Noah, to run the day-to-day operations, and, you know, it's expanding his role. And as we do that salary survey work, and that, whatever we're calling that survey, looking at our org chart, you know, there's just, we're probably doing something with Noah's title. And so, just making sure nobody's uncomfortable with that. And I'm not, I'm still going to be the mayor, and I'm still ultimately responsible. But if I'm not there, because I'm down in Olympia, somebody's got to run the show. And be, you know, be there and accountable. So, with that, what do we have on our list, some of your current issues?
Can I just give a little bit of context?
Yes.
So, you all had a ton of great ideas. And when the mayor called me about a month and a half ago, he said, okay, you were bringing all of our council members and our directors together to get a sense of what the priorities are for the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two biannual budget. And what I heard today was an amazing list of projects that are not going to fit in a figure budget. And so, you saw that I'm running back and forth between the sides of the room. Everything that you're seeing here is what the mayor kind of meant to me to say, this is more of a kind of current item to consider for your twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. And the items that are hiding behind that flip chart that I'm running green are perhaps for later dates, that I'll tax for right, right up for your summary. But if I'm correct, it's not linked to discussion for this twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-five.
Actually, what we're looking at here is potential, I used the fund in twenty, twenty twenty.
Oh, twenty twenty.
And then this stuff over here, and what we can't get to is going to flow to twenty-one, twenty-two.
Got it. Okay. So the question before your council is, what is a priority to fund in twenty twenty, based off of what they heard from your...
Probably looking at second, you know, second, third, fourth. Not tomorrow, but, you know, somewhere later this year.
All right, you need to post projects, I mean, we're briefly, we're going to be doing this. So were any of those projects on those four sheets up there, for intentional purposes, already funded, or are those all considered new projects? Because, you know, what I heard was definitely staffing, you know, I heard someone making this management, but I had a hard time understanding which ones were implemented.
See, I mean, this is, we got policy here, this is already, so, I hate to draw lines through this stuff, but this is done, you funded, you funded this.
That one, sure.
That's done. I mean, it's not, the body of work's not done, you've committed to it, it's in the budget, we're going to do it.
Well, look, let's be clear on what you mean by future staffing, because you've got salary survey.
It's a salary survey?
We haven't seen what is being projected out beyond tomorrow. So I'm looking at future staffing, we've heard from the police department, we've heard from all of the departments of what your staffing needs are. We haven't had any kind of discussion on that.
I think that's step, so the step one, or two steps to this, I can see. Step one is salary survey and the strategic, that we had a term for, strategic...
Strategic workforce plan.
Strategic workforce plan. That's this twenty-five thousand dollars that you funded, that's a body of work that we're going to complete this year, which is going to give us some results that you, we have to bring back to you to say, yep, you got right, and we have all these needs. Once again, it's going to probably tell us, we have more needs than we have money. But it'll give us a roadmap.
That's my point, though. We, we haven't, as the council, sat down and talked about what is our priority, our, because we can't staff everyone.
Correct.
So is that going to tell us what we should be staffing?
It's going to give us, it's no different than the Scytel, the body of work, or other bodies of work that we do, it's going to give us a roadmap of what it should look...
Have we set the goal, so that we know how to get to that goal?
The goal, the, the, the lens, right now, the lens is coming from Noah, and Mark, and Nick, because that's the only thing we know, is what...
In the police sheet?
In the police sheet. The only thing we know is what's happening within our walls. We're going to hire a consultant to go, you know, the city of Fife does it this way. And their model looks, they're going to give us from a different lens, and what are, how our peers are structured, and maybe that's not...
So that's a piece of what we need to have more of, I guess.
And that's coming. And that'll be part of, that work product will drive in the next budget. So I'm not advocating really for much, if anything, for staff, maybe sooner versus later, on a contract, public information officer, maybe.
So what I heard as a preamble, as we just started this exercise, we're looking specifically at twenty twenty.
Yes.
So, to maybe expand it on, you're saying, are we hearing anybody saying we need staffing plan alteration at staff in twenty twenty? What I'm maybe hearing is no, we're going to do these studies, and those staffing plans will be part of the planning study in future budget cycle.
Absolutely.
So if this, this conversation right now is simply focused on, you know, we've already got planned for twenty twenty, do we want to try to take on anything else?
Yeah, or what?
The balance of this budget.
Yeah, and what tools could help us now? Because I can assure you, it's not another project. It's tools, or resources that will help us improve our workflow. So I, I mean, if I was...
I guess I'm concerned with, to me, strategic workforce plan goes beyond twenty.
Way beyond.
They're finishing it in twenty twenty.
I'm only finishing the body of work.
Developing the plan in twenty twenty.
To bring, yes, to bring to a plan, and the salary survey results, so that we can bring and get, and make that part of the next biannual budget process.
So we're not going to really talk about the future, that we get this plan and say, oh, we agree, or instantly go.
What I want to say is, they're not going to bring us a plan. They're giving this information about how it could be staffed. When future staffing went up there, I looked at it more long-term.
As did I.
As to what growth we're going to have, given the amounts that Nick has brought us, what staffing infrastructure do we need for that? What does our police department need?
I agree.
You know, what, so, to me, you have two different things. Yeah, this meeting, from my point of view, cannot talk about finances just for twenty twenty, because you're starting a biannual budget this year, for twenty twenty.
Later this year. What, what, I think it's, all of this feeds into, I think we need to look at our shorter-term needs, and then our longer-term needs, and we may not get to all of that discussion today, because of the time constraints we have. And we'll bring the rest of that discussion to our work studies ahead of starting July or August budget process. And it's just conversation driving.
So if I may, I can just kind of, our conversation right now, I mean, Jay, I guess you need one second. So my understanding is your priority right now is to look at this list and say, what do you think we can do in twenty twenty? There's only going to be a few things on that list. Anything that isn't captured there is going to likely end up somewhere in our twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two budget, but that will happen through a series of work studies. So I think, tell me whether you feel this was successful. At the end of today, there's a list of three to four projects that maybe could be prioritized in twenty twenty, because there is some money available. And then everything else, it sounds like Noah and others, that will be kind of the basis of where they start their twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two plan. Is that kind of where everyone is?
I'm just, I'm struggling with the order for what we're doing. When we get together and just kind of think, I, I walk into here thinking that I don't care about tomorrow, I'm looking at day after tomorrow. Tomorrow is dealt with for a first step. If you ever come back to us and say, we've got an extra fifty grand we haven't spent, and this is where I think we should spend it, and deal with it in the work study. What we do here is more of, what we saw from our department is, the police department wants to change the management style. We've got a workload issue that ECD is dealing with. We need to figure out, from the group, how are we going to deal with this, not, just let me say, twenty-one, twenty-two is the first step, but we've got to close out for, and that's against what I was approaching today.
Okay, so in five minutes, I can probably tell you what I would advocate, we're going to bring forward. And then we'll sell that aside, and we'll work on this then today.
I'm sure we've worked for us.
So, and we may, we may not, we may not even have enough money for the three or four things that, you know, I think his laser fish tool is something we've got to do sooner versus later. And Noah's got to find a way to do it. You know, it's, otherwise, these records just continue to pile up, and we're going to have to add more bodies to Randy's operation. And I don't want to add any bodies, because I don't have room for more bodies. The other pieces, I think Noah, or Nick has a, the building inspector is going to, is a, it's a problem. And we're going to start falling behind on inspections and processing of building permits. And we know this gentleman's going to retire, let's get out in front of that, let's add an FTE into that, and we'll evaluate when his retire, when he retires. That way we can plan for this overlap. Because if we've got a workhorse that's doing twenty-five or thirty inspections, and the standard out there is a dozen, we hire, we wait till he retires, and we hire a new person, we're going to end up hiring two people. Let's, let's get somebody up to speed, and evaluate, come back and evaluate that staffing need and when, whether the economy is still strong. I think those are two important things. I don't know about you guys, I'm getting tired, and I can deal with it, but I'm getting tired of being, getting beat up, and being in the reactionary mode in public information. And I don't, I'm not advocating to hire an employee, but I think for twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars, we can enter into a contract with consultants to help us revamp our work pay, or, you know, without having anybody that develops content. I, I think that could be important, but it isn't our biggest priority at all. I mean, we're, we're doing it, it's just, we have people manipulating information out there, and all we can do is present that.
Can I add one thing, to go back to the building inspector? The concern I have from HR perspective, when they're even part of this, is the recruiting. Building inspectors are tough to recruit and hire. So the process we're taking, which can get in common, is the inspector to buy this, might be a lengthy process. So at some point, the city is, in the motor sector, that is a difficult position, I've seen in local cities, where it's just hard to find somebody that's able to do the job. Because the private sector's much more less than this financial package. And what they're doing, trying to distract the other agents, what they're doing to finance that. So, that's something to consider.
Mayor?
Two I heard was, I heard Mark talk about an electrician, and I wasn't quite sure really if he was with that. Would he want to say, take it off and light them fine? And the second one was, I have to count the numbers, but I think we're also looking at additional police officers this year.
And we are, but we, you already approved.
That, okay, so that's a...
And so there is another request coming in the next biannual budget, to add another sergeant, and potentially take current patrol officers and make them corporals. But the, the chiefs need, we couldn't, even if you approved an FTE, I couldn't get you, I couldn't get another police officer hired to fill that. That is a, we've got two right now, what we need, and it'll take us a year from the day we hire them to get them on the street. It is pointless to, to try to stuff another, another body in that, when we couldn't even recruit.
Those were the two needs I heard people.
And then secondly, I'll address Mark's. We've added seven or eight people in the last four years at Public Works, and we've got a whole bunch of turnover. And what I've asked our Public Works department is, we're not, I don't, I'm not going to advocate, and you could choose differently, but I don't think we should add any more bodies, and so we can get our arms around and get them executing at a high level. And, I'm not saying we're doing a bad job, we can do a better job. And I think we need to look, Mike is buried, there is no doubt about it. But I think step one is no different than what Nick's doing with the inspectors, is we have a company that's on call, so that when Mike has more work than he can do, that this company comes in and does some of that work. And when that level, when that's, when that consultant, like Nick's is doing right now, is doing more work than the cost of an employee, that's when we just add a second employee. I don't think we have enough work for two electricians.
So I'm telling you what I heard from both of us.
Yeah, so I wanted to figure we're all responding to the same question. So let's hear yours, and then I want to bring this back together.
Yeah, I have a question, we have a statement. So I think today was extremely productive, and I think staffing, the leadership job, bringing everything together. What might be missing is for the council to sit down and come up with our visions, who are going to spend that half a day, that's kind of what I thought today, to be a little bit more about it. I know some of them are running on, but, and then, and then we come back together and see how those two, two are buried.
Okay.
We're just missing, I think, the long-term perspective of the council, what's the standpoint? These are all great things, and also what I'm hearing, we're probably not going to move the deal in twenty twenty that much in any of these areas, but for this, that fifty thousand dollars, we're going to move the first study. So maybe it's time to look at in the next quarter or something to bring the council back together, to really spend some time. We're not going to do it in twenty minutes.
To me, I'm sorry, so, I'm interrupting here, you're just... So again, is, this is, this stuff is no different than the mayor presenting the council's budget to the government. Mayor, you're responsible for running the city day to day. It's not our job. Credit, we have a fiscal responsibility, one of those that, you know, these things, if you're recommending it, fine. When we start talking about restructuring this department, when we start talking about balancing the needs of all of our departments, to me, that's our role. I very much appreciate you keeping us informed, and yes, we're going to have a plus though, before the biannual software, if it's not in budget. But you're telling me what you need to run the city for the next six months? Good job. That's what you're here for.
So it may be, what I hear is, it may be appropriate to get this group back together for machine and machines section only, as a tip to the budget, which we have normally kept down in May, which runs real nice, and we just play kick off the button a lot. By that time, hopefully we'll have this work for strategic plan to kind of share with the committee.
I think that's a great idea, because I'm going to have one right there. We've heard today, the basic data that we need to figure out, what are the challenges that we're facing with for the next five years. Now, it's our job to try to figure out...
What's our priority?
How can we get to the goal?
So what I'm hearing is that today was the foundation for having all that data. And then there's a budget process that around, most of the stage in between is a visioning session of some sort, so that you know what your policy objectives are.
We need to set the goals, so that when you guys build the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, you're on a path to achieve those goals.
So that we don't get to the budget deliberations in November, and you, we've delivered on what your expectations are. I know when I first got on the council, John and I and other members of the fat lines, maybe with all of the budgets are, because there was administration...
There was, there was prescription.
There was, there was no communication, okay? And it was like, what are you thinking? We need to do, we need to go this way.
It's going to be really difficult to get all these documents through the PDA, that you know about.
That's what I'm going to do.
Speaking of reference retention, I have to repeat this.
The directors are worried.
I think this is great when we have that session, pre...
Yeah.
Pre-fact.
And Brandy's already capturing all of this, so you don't have to do it. Brandy's going to, Brandy, if you want it all in one big email, each one of these, I don't know, it'll be one because each one is a.
Maybe we get it by, by department.
Yeah.
It'll be by department, that's what you'll get.
But why couldn't we just have one, why do I have to open up 14 B yet?
Okay, so you have to get some of these things summarized that, you know, we've heard all these chapters.
It'd be a shout there, so.
So please go and do a summary document and, and we'll marry that with Brandy's budget work, so if you want it, I guess we can do it in one PDF for those that want it that way, but I know it's going to come to Brandy in, in seven, each department, seven.
And it is one PDF.
Okay, what, what do that mean?
And give us all this stuff is really great and I very much appreciate the workload that the work has done in 2013 and all the achievements that they've made, that's great. What about 22, 23? That's what we need to summarize about, you know, because that was a big one.
That's what we can't drive.
So, let's get a summary, the police department is projecting X number of additional positions, a change in the management structure, you know, ECD has a challenge for the next few years if building continues, you know, let's get that out on a piece of paper so that we can kind of see as opposed to, let's see what the police department is saying on that problem.
So in terms of you can use the next 20 minutes of your time wisely, it sounds like, and this came from Councilor Clausen, but it sounds like if you want to give the thumbs up to your mayor.
Well, they're, they're going to give the thumbs up when I bring the specific ideas to the council.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm like, even I'm aware, I think we've got some pressing issues that we need to address sooner versus later, but we've got to find revenue first to pay for these things, which is.
And if you're going to prioritize it based on your praise, do I share with you to say that the laser fish is the most important thing or the building inspector is the, this is the priority was your proposing? I'm not going to stand here and say, you know, I think we should move the public information officer, that's not my role.
I think you're going to see these first two pretty darn quick and.
Great, and what was the plan for the number three?
Yeah.
We all agreed to go forward.
I, I will bring you more information and how it can be poured as soon as I have the information. Of these other, do you mean, you guys want to talk about what your, of what you heard, what are your hot buttons and priorities?
Well, I can tell you money right off, I believe you've done things are, but, you know, I'm, I've got to be convinced yet with police departments, why are we putting in other level of placement ID corporals? I guess, I don't understand well what it is that this layer is going to accomplish when, when I hear that we have this, if you're, I don't know, bodies issue so that we can do the training, the means requiredness, where do we need to benefit of a corporal? I'm not sure, so I just need to understand more.
And I can see that a little bit.
Okay, well, I didn't answer it right now, Rob, I guess you asked about cottons.
I think that answer comes here.
Could be.
And, and we, chief's got some data to support that, that it's going out to our peers and checking in and seeing, how, how's everybody else doing this?
Yeah, I mean, how is it good about that work? What, what are we going to gain? And it's not that I'm against it, it's just, it's nothing but change, that I just need to understand better as well.
Okay, that's good to hear. Others? Jay?
I thought it was fabulous, the information that was gathered up and I don't really, you know, bring fire up, but certainly, we did this 18 months ago and it certainly was a lot more information because of the digital projects. Right now, you guys keep saying, hey, we're full and, and we are, and so, you know, hearing that we're not, you know, we're just trying to stay afloat and how to get more efficient and going to the next biennial budget, I think is the right way to go. And I would add the jaws on this too, if you're mayor.
So you're ready to say something?
Well, I am very concerned about the infrastructure downtown, there's an immediate need, so that's covered, right?
The infrastructure, yeah.
Electrical infrastructure downtown.
Yeah, that's on the, the electrical on the.
Right, that's immediate. I'm a little concerned about top heavy and I'm just saying, little town, we're expecting a lot of growth, but can we afford the growth?
You talked about top heavy from Kathy or management.
Top heavy, police, top heavy. And I'm actually a little bit concerned, quite frankly, about you not being in the office as much as just me, because I'm not sure how, what you're doing out there and I know that your involvement is good. What I'm not sure about is if we're leading him to a city management type position, unobliged, I don't know if that's the version of thinking, what does that mean for you and what does that mean for all of us? I would like more discussion on that.
What I can share, I know the million dollars that we got from, for Tremont, we wouldn't have got if I wasn't on the state board and engaged PSR, the impact engaged PSR.
I, I believe that.
And that's, and, and as we heard, and I'm, if I, if I want me to be in the office more and dial back, I can, and, but we heard, what was the number? We've got $100 million in projects and we've got, if we increase the impact fees, it'll give us 17 million, if it doesn't, we'll get 11 million. That money's coming from somewhere else and it's from the state and we got Mark and it's not just me, I've got Noah, Brandy, Nick, Mark, all of us are engaged in regional and state agencies and it's really important prior administration, did the law staff do that? And I think it's vital and, and it does, it takes away from our time in the office, there's no doubt about it, there's a cost to that.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion for the, our wrap up now because we're kind of going in that direction? I found it really helpful just to hear from a few of you about what's sticking out of your head at the end of today and maybe we can just kind of sit back and just capture the notes and lots of the Q and A and more of just around the room.
Okay.
But you are going to.
No, I started there.
Do you want to just, and then just go around the room and then that can be, and I know it's kind of where you begin when you have that next session that thinks John like five, seven, an hour, whatever it will be, so.
Sure, so I guess maybe a takeaway from you saying everything and, you know, understanding the last 30 minutes of conversation because it relates to 2020, we're not here to be in your way, but I do like the direction that each of you are heading for the remainder of this year's talking about efficiency, that's what I think, that that's something that can be really impactful and could, you know, be beneficial instead of just doing this and doing that, I think both are efficiency, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive, I'd give it a call. And I think as we move forward, just my reflection on the last year or two, because we've been so busy, I feel like at times, and sometimes days, two to three weeks, we can realize this, that maybe sometimes we put the car per os, we're so quick to want to get something done, that maybe we're slightly doing things out of order and let's just make sure, so I think that priority and plan is just make sure, you know, for example, we've got this incredible downtown study going, then we also have this R and P that will be done next week, does that have a order? I don't know, I think we should have that dotted. There's a lot of money, I just think we should keep it like that. It's just more, more proactive approach to things as, as from a strategic standpoint, and we're not always just, it's topic of the week, get, let's try to get with the council that, and it might not fit into that strategic plan, so. I thought, you want me to say it again, or? That's everything I said.
Okay.
She, she.
Yeah, I wasn't typing where you were.
Real quickly, quickly.
Yeah.
Ditto about, this is not for 20, 2020, more for 21, 22 biennial budget, Rob's the mayor, building on what John said, go for it, have fun.
I didn't say fun.
But, no, that, so you're doing a good job with the resources that it has, in fact, we've got the same job, the resources we have.
I would just like, or I try to keep in mind what it is about culture that I like and is it residential neighborhoods and are these characters that we want to preserve as a long way, because that's how you started with it. What is the appeal of the area and how can we make sure we're capitalizing on it if that loses something? And the other thing that I think we may need to supply is emerging social issues, which I left a question for earlier, such as homelessness is becoming unusable in my city. So I'm, when you mentioned it, it's not an easy topic, but I think if we start keeping that in mind and just figuring out what we can address.
And Councilor Clausen, what I had for you, because that's what I started typing, was about concern about the extra layer of management in the police department as well as just allowing the near-term issues to be within the purview of the mayor and to really focus on longer-term issues with the council, so.
Yeah, and, and you know, that's not the, 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 because I think, you know, fractures of homelessness, I was paying attention when we were going through specifically, you know, we have this whole thing with homelessness, we have the same with Rock and Dicks, we have, you know, I mentioned car foot, so I mean, we've got some big issues that some of them are being addressed, I'd like to have some more scheduled on a couple of them just so that, you know, we can get behind whatever, a list of the goals that I mentioned earlier, and it would be nice to get on cue, but, again, I'm just, I'm trying to respect what my role is as a policy versus a mayor's role, we don't need all this stuff, so, it's fun for us to be able to say, you know, I think we need to change the color of the car, but it's definitely our role, so, that's all. Without limitations. Well, building and that sort of.
Absolutely.
And, and Cindy, what I heard from you was concerned about being top heavy and about the electrical infrastructure downtown, so anything else that sticks out in your head from today?
Well, I'm concerned about our growth. We have all of these projects that are pending that require all this infrastructure and the juggling and building inspectors and how are we really managing our growth and will this area still be affordable at the end of that? What have, you know, the trend that we have ongoing right now is a concern to me just because I think it's being forced on us too quickly, we're not able to handle it, I'm sure, you know, that the addition of staff is not going to take care of it because we're talking about projects that are going to be finding apartments or something, you know, how are we going to handle the traffic congestion, the, the, the consequences of that? I don't feel that we're ready for it or that we're ready to handle all of that and it seems to me that there needs to be more planning. There's so many projects, I don't even know, I don't know how to handle all of that. I don't know how we're going to capture the needs of the expenses of all of that into any kind of impact date that would really cover it. I'm concerned about what that looks like 15 years out and when people living now still be able to afford to live. You know, that's a big year to me, but I'm just saying, I don't know. I, I am concerned about Port Orchard's decision being able to afford to live in Port Orchard for five to 10 years.
Still affordability, traffic, all the kind of side effects of growth.
So I share a concern with, with Director Candy's agree with it, I think Cindy's present on a million dollar, millions is not a question, but I think what we're seeing today is a consequence of all the growth that's been thrown at us, so we've got much more, I'm also concerned about, you know, chief coming in and giving a presentation that is a pretty big commitment from the city, but a little more with your report that's coming, I think, with what we've talked about, the clear decisions, for example, that looks like a much quicker analysis of our needs and being able to support a position for the inspector. One of the things I, I think is important is to take a look at what we talked about last year and I think you sent out a summary of the retreat from last year, and one of the things we didn't really touch on, although I figured a little bit, was address homelessness issues, including the city approach to tiny houses and emergency parks, and I think that's an issue that we're continuing to grapple with, is how we talk about homelessness and so I'd like to make sure that we don't forget the homelessness issue that we have and I share concerns about rural housing and the type of, so I'm sure our work happens.
So, but just quickly on that tiny home issue, it's not that it would be included in our code and Commissioner Rio has a dozen or more of these structures, it's every time a slight site is selected, it's, that community comes together very loudly and says, "Not my neighborhood."
Yeah, and we hear that.
Yeah, and it's not included in from our code, those could be built, and so are we going to force it on someone in, in, in a neighborhood?
Well, I think the discussion I'm hearing was tiny houses as, would be a tiny house in village or homes, residential housing, not a tiny home on block. But what would be simple, what's that, corridor homes? Now, like, I don't know, it was a counter, the county's got to pay a sound barrier, you're going to have a bunch of.
They'll plug up a third room.
Yeah, I know, there's been probably four sites.
So the other thing's like maybe more a future study session, work session, work study, I'm trying to use your vocabulary, work study, okay, yeah, so anything else in terms of your big picture takeaways? Okay, thank you. Councilor Ashby, what's going to stick in your head tomorrow when you're going by business?
Well, I'm going to echo what Cindy said and what I think, one of the most important things for this council to engage in is to understand the implications of that growth and we know we're going to have growth, but as, as Cindy listed off, a number of items, elements that come under growth and there's even more than that, so before we raise our hand at KRCC or PSRC or say, yes, we're going to take in 15,000 people or whatever this number is, I think we truly need to understand the implications of that, what are, what exactly in my neighborhood alone, and I appreciate Mr. Bond came out and talked to some of my neighbors and one of my neighbors because they're getting down their trees, you know, and if you go up to the new McCormick Woods area, all McCormick Woods is very tree and their new areas are not, if you go down here to Endosio, up there to the Blueberry, there's no trees. So as this growth happens, are we losing our? I mean, there's just a lot, I think that we really, really need to understand the growth and we need to understand the, the order with which those decisions of growth happen, exactly as, as what Sean was saying. So the other thing, the, two other points I wanted to make is regarding the mayor being out in the office. It's, it was a shock to all of us to find out that Port Orchard actually qualified to have a state executive board at PSRC. I believe there's a lot more to our city that we may not understand because we've been through so much. I think there's a great value to having a regional presence and a state presence. I think it's almost critical for us. The other thing is, again, Sean makes us aware of this all the time, we look at the priorities of the, the elements in the money, and I don't want to end it though, but do you know how easy it is to spend money? If you have a little bit of money extra, if you know how many times you can spend that, and so we have to be very cognizant of, of, of how that money is spent, is it one-time revenue that needs to go to a one-time source or is it ongoing revenue that can go to an ongoing expense? I mean, those things really need to be narrowed and it's just really, really easy to say, oh, that's only $25,000, that's only $70,000. The downtown secondary plan, we only had to grow to 750, we have to come up to 770, you know, because we were putting so much, we were making a nice contribution. Right.
All this is scripty, man.
Right, well, and the other thing to add more on what I was going to say is, as we said today, Tremont was a $20 million idea and it took all of our resources, human resources, financial resources to make that happen, at the expense of our neighbors. You know, so we have to look, the, the mayor refers to it as a plum meadows area, well, it's everything from Tremont south on Sydney, you know, that neighborhood is a nest. That neighborhood is a mess. I lived there 30 years ago, it was a mess there, and now we have all this infill construction in there. So we have to figure out how to provide relief to those folks. And that's not the only neighborhood, it's, it's just the one that is really flattering to me, and the big, we missed just about. So those are things. I think we, as a council, have some big level things to look at, and we have limited resources, but we need to understand the whole picture before we make independent, isolated decisions.
Cindy, do you want to share what's exactly right?
Um, for me, that salary and staffing survey that's coming up is, is just crucial. I, if I'm sitting at your side of this table, I would want you, would want you to want your department directors to be champions for their department, right? And advocating for their department. So that third party outside view of how others can do it, how the ways to cut this pie, um, efficiencies that can be gained, I think are just really crucial for us.
Noah, you want to hear 20 seconds?
Yeah, yeah, uh, my takeaway is I'm really thrilled to have this council, this mayor with us for the next four years. And that's honestly true, because we're talking about the right things, and we're not gonna change over here, choose, we're gonna be talking to this for the next couple of years, planning these major issues out financially and policy wise. So I'm thrilled to the team of that.
I agree. This, you know, these are good problems to have, and for those of us six years ago that were in this room, um, it wasn't nearly as fun. And I was questioning my role, and I'm glad I made the decision that I made, and I'm glad it's a, and, and, you know, and I think this transportation committee we created is my role. There are some big transportation things from, as we talked about, Flower Meadows, Bethel, Sedgwick, Oak Cliff and Road. I mean, we've got a lot of needs, a lot of priorities, and to have that focus on that is really important, and a lot of other things.
Cindy, you want to give your 10 second question, vote in your brain?
I guess, uh, two points, um, you know, we, I, we have enough on our plate right now that I think, to some degree, I hope that I'm bringing you less things to vote on so that I can put my head down and get, get things done for the next few months, uh, other than the transportation, which I'm also very excited about as we head forward into our vision and budget process. And, and other than that, the, the rate that we are growing right now, one of the, you know, if you're, wanna speed things up or slow things down, the fees and the impact fees is a great way to kind of meter that, or at least harness that power. And, um, I think that, you know, we do where we needed 55 years ago, when the consultant brought us the impact fee at a higher level, we maybe, uh, would have considered things differently than when we did, but let's, let's make sure we take advantage of an economy that's, that's super heated right now.
Brandy, do you want to give your question, note, takeaway?
Yeah, so my takeaway is that just as, as much as important is for you guys to hear other department's director's roles, and for you guys to set policy in the city for, um, I think it's also important that us directors get to hear the other departments, and we have this cohesive, um, roadmap for the next couple of years. And I think that, um, it's, and I can see to the mayor, since the last six years, it's been pretty, um, it's a one evening from what it was to what it is now. And I think that's, we lose sight of, of always going back to what it was and, and we even move forward. And we are in a great position from the city, from the directors, to the council, to the mayor, and even to our citizens, as to where we were six years ago. And I think that we've, we've moved the needle a lot, and it's, um, and it gives us, the mayor, um, new, trying to think, ways to put things on the agenda for you guys to hear and not, like he said, the day, yeah, like you guys said, the mayor's day to day operation doesn't need to come to you guys. It's an overall, and I, the other takeaway that I'm getting is that, you know, maybe this should be more of a two day retreat. I mean, it's important to hear ours, but we also need to hear yours to, to move forward. And, and sometimes when we have that time lapse, you forget, and, you know, like I said, last year when we had a retreat, what about this? We didn't get to, to talk about this, so maybe it's more of a two day retreat and get everybody here one side, or the other side, and then what's the, the final plan moving forward? So I find it extremely, extremely valuable.
So Mayor, maybe I'll wrap up with my case, I'm gonna let you run your final word.
I, I think I said not that.
So to help you all be successful moving forward, what I'm gonna do is take all of these fantastic presentations, pull out where I heard there were priorities, put them maybe on one sheet if possible, switch it down, um, and then also just make sure that some of the questions and answers were captured here as well. I'll also, um, transcribe all of these ideas as best as possible. I will try to, you know, color coordinate them or do something so that it's clear what is near term and what is really doing department versus what is longer term. And that is something that you can use after you kind of have your goals, you can start throwing the different priorities underneath those goals and then ranking them. So that will hopefully set you up, but I just want to reflect on three things that I heard throughout the day. One is real appreciation for the work that your departments are doing. And so I've been to a number of different council retreats and things over my six years at the triangles, and the level of appreciation was just noticeable for me. And the second thing, I am amazed with how complimentary your interests and skills are, from the person you all did this morning, which was a little different committees. I don't know whether it was some good element or something, but it really, you have very complimentary skills, which is a strength for you all moving forward. So I think today we have a lot of information, and I think it's gonna be a stepping stone as you create your next budget, which is, I think, my understanding, pretty difficult in a, you know, the second year or two year cycle, and you're doing all the right thinking and work. And so hopefully, what I produce will send you forward in that direction. I just had a good time today with you all, so thank you. And with that, do you want to, last word?
The, uh, you know, I touched on it earlier, I, I believe we, from, from you, the staff, all of us, uh, the team with some of this is put on. So, and I'm, I'm proud of the work we're doing, um, you know, it, you know, it's, and of course, we need to continue to raise the bar, or the system's demanding of us, and and we will. Uh, but I think we, gosh, what we've accomplished in the last three or four years, and who would have asked, I mean, how is questioning six months in? But we're gonna be a three month in, and how are we gonna do that? The parks we've opened, and I'm just, I'm just thrilled with the job we're doing. And these are, there's problems to have, and fortunately, we're in a robust economy, and, and, and we're gonna have the resources to solve some of these things, not all of it. And we're never gonna make everybody happy. Um, we've got a lot of work to do, but I know we've got the right team to do it. So, thank you.
Very good.